Village of Celado, Board of Aldermen meeting. Celado Municipal Building 301, North State Coast, Celado, Texas. Today is February the 7th, 2019. May the minutes reflect that it is exactly 6:30 PM. This is the call for order. My secretary, please call the board.
Alderman Jackson?
Here.
Alderman Coggin?
Here.
Mayor Price and Tensworth?
Here.
Alderman and Abdul?
Here.
Mayor Wallace?
Here. Let me pray. Sure is cold out there, God. That wind is just whipping it up. But what a beautiful sunset you gave us. And the sunrises has been spectacular. Thank you for our community. And we've got people in it who are ill and sick. And we actually DVD with them. There are people here who have lost loved ones. And they know they don't walk this journey alone. We walk with them. We have a lot of things on the agenda that comes before us. Give us clear thinking. Wise decisions. A sense of humor. And yet, a sense of importance and sincerity.
Okay, so.
Because you have given us a tremendously community. And we're appreciative. Help us to keep it that way. In your name I pray. Amen. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the flag. I pledge allegiance to Dean Texas, one state, united, indivisible.
Folks, before we go on any further, I have looked at all the people who would like to speak. And you may all speak if you wish. I mean, do all of these. But I just want you to know one thing. That we have taken or be at the request of the staff of the agenda for tonight. And I know some of you wanted to speak to that. If you want to, it's perfectly fine. But I just wanted you to know.
Excuse me. Is the speaker on or... Let me speak a little closer, please.
I can't. I hear things too, but you're not. Well, try those. I have the Navy V and provided them. Thank you. It is. And thank you for bringing that up because we forget. And one, these days, we may have some good microphones that you could put up there and you could hear us quite well. But we're not there. We've got a lot more to do before we even get here. For the citizens' communications. The Board of Aldermen welcomes comments from citizens on issues and items of concern, not on the agenda. Those wishing to speak must sign in before the meeting begins and observe a three-minute time limit when addressing the board's speakers. We'll have one opportunity to speak during the time here. Speakers desiring to speak on an agenda item will be allowed to speak when the agenda item is called. Inquiries about matters not listed on the agenda will either be directed to the staff or placed on a future agenda for Alderman consideration. We're very serious about the three minutes. Especially tonight when we have so many. But we really try hard to keep it at that. And the second thing, as you come to speak, you're really not speaking to the audience. What you're speaking to is to us. You're telling us your opinion. And if you've never gone through one of these, let me just share with you. We will not respond to anything you say. We can't. But you'll see us taking notes. And somewhere down the line, maybe not in this meeting, maybe in the one that comes up, you will hear us address what you're speaking about. Just want you to know that. We take all of this seriously. And we do not take what you say for granted. Therefore, let us begin. Mr. Thomas Moore. Will you come, sir? Please, your name and your address.
A little cold going on. Thomas Moore, 162 12th Green Lane. What I wanted to talk about was the public hearing item on the golf course. I understand that you had a special meeting on the 5th to discuss that. My concern is, well, first of all, it was a win because I think you've done the right thing. My concern is, I knew nothing of that meeting. It wasn't posted on the calendar. It is posted on the front of the building. But I don't come down here every day, so I did not see it. The optics, or what someone like me would view that as, is you're doing something that may be considered a little bit underhanded or behind the scenes. If it's a legal issue, I can understand going into a closed session. But the reason why we have public hearings is so that the public can hear what the conversation is. The public can also comment to that. So my concern is that we're doing this and we're doing it in what I would consider kind of out of order. I do have some experience in working with the city in Bell County. And I just see that that being a little bit out of order and us citizens not being able to hear all the conversation that could be, whether it's legal or not. I will discuss this with the village administrator in a later day. Thank you.
You're welcome. And mayor, for the record, the agenda was posted on the calendar because it's called. He comes down after the meeting.
Thank you, Ron. I will not call upon you, but thank you for your coming. Carlson. Who's on?
Carlson.
Hi.
Hello. How do you pronounce your first name?
Kristy. Kristy Carlson. Michael Kristy Carlson. We live at 1811 Indian Trail. It's right where the blacktop ends and the dirt road begins on Smith Branch Dirt Road. So we have come tonight just for you guys to consider in your planning and zoning that we should maintain the prescriptive easement there to allow, most importantly, for EMS vehicles, most notably fire trucks, any time needed to get back there. That's something that's been in existence for a long time. All of the current homeowners have purchased their homes knowing that easement was there for safety reasons. And so I just would like for the Aldermen and the P&Zs to consider that whenever you move forward with whatever is decided on that development there.
Thank you, Kristy.
Point of order to the mayor, please. With the item being pulled and we were to speak under that item, are we able to speak now since it's pulled from the agenda?
Sure, if you saw this out, Merle.
Okay.
And by the way, that is you.
No, okay. I'm just trying to get the point of order. Great. Thank you.
Merle, the reason I gave the announcement is because some people may not have listened through to this.
Right. I understand. It was just that I just want to make sure of point of order that I understood I could speak now. Otherwise, I wouldn't think that we'd be able to speak.
You're off time.
2025 Indian Trail, Celado. Would like to talk to you. I mentioned a few things concerning the additional, approximately 54 acres, concerning the easement on Smith Branch between the gravel part and the part that is currently paved. The paved part, I can understand. It may be that the gravel could be classified as an implied easement. And that's what I'm concerned about. There's a number of us on that gravel access that we use for trailers, RVs, boats, things of that nature. I also know that the fire department has commented about using that road as a barrier concerning fires because of the amount of acreage behind in that roughly 500 acres there that the 54 acres is part of and the residence itself. The fire hydrants are approximately 1,000 feet apart. With that fire barrier, they are able to control the fire without it reaching the homes or the eight-foot fences behind those homes. Like for you to consider that, please, in your future decision. Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Mark Rice. 2013 Indian Trail. I live next to Merle. And at this point, I think most of my comments are redundant. I have no issue with the development other than the Smith Branch Road, as they have said. The gravel part, turns out it did not follow the property line. And that's what the issue is. But if it's closed off, we have a problem with firebreak and access to the back of our property. So I would like to see this become an item of discussion or an item on the agenda. In a later meeting, we'll discuss what we did with that road. There is some precedent of that being, you know, there are some laws that say that if a property is not contested, you lose the rights of it. And I'd hate to have to invoke that. But we need a firebreak and we need access to the back of our properties. And so we need to come to an equitable solution with that. And that's where they'll all have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Judy Fields.
Next item coming up at 6:49. I'm Judy Fields in 18 La Lox Circle, Celado, Texas. And I am presently the president of the Celado Historical Society. Santa Fe and Albuquerque, which city is the capital of New Mexico. During the 20th century, each was given the opportunity to build either the state prison or an airport. Santa Fe chose the prison for philosophical reason as it would provide the most jobs and show the world it was a humanitarian city. Albuquerque quickly took advantage of gaining the airport and became one of the most popular tourism attractions because of the ease of traveling. This was in the late 1920s. Why am I bringing up this subject? The City Council of Santa Fe failed to project that economic development would bring, that would occur in the future with a new method of transportation bringing people to their city, airplanes. However, they were wise enough to realize that they must make changes that would enhance Santa Fe's attraction as a destination point, mainly by preserving the history of the area. Stripped ordinances were passed that would require buildings and residences to maintain the allure and mystery of the architecture of the native American Madaho Indians. All buildings currently must have a pueblo style as well as landscaping that utilizes water and vegetation, conservation, and the environment. Interior decorations are at the choice of the owners. By maintaining its historical preservation, the City Council of Santa Fe has kept its historical district as well as created a unique environment that encourages keeping their history. Santa Fe is now a renowned art colony, having attracted not only famous artists who live there but paint the unique allure and the speak of the desert, encouraging visitors and commerce. So the O has a rare opportunity to follow in the steps of such communities as Santa Fe to preserve its history by strengthening such ordinances that would keep our village as a destination point, both for its history, shops, and artists. The Celado Historical Society is dedicated to working with the village Aldermen and any current and future businesses in maintaining and preserving our valuable buildings and attractions. We are asking that the Aldermen take this into consideration when you're giving proposals by the P&Z and help us to maintain this historic district. We are running into some problems already. And we really appreciate the P&Z because they have exhibited very supportive comments on keeping this historic. And that's why Celado's here anyway. People love Celado for its ambiance and its history. Few people realize Main Street was the trail to go north on cattle ride. It was one of the original chisel trails. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Yes, this is the three-minute panel?
Yeah. I never had, then they would turn it off.
Could you possibly find a less obnoxious tone?
We only have one item on the consent agenda. I'm sure that you have read it and looked at it. I'll entertain the motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, would you approve the consent agenda?
I say second.
Second.
It's been made the second discussion. Question has been called on Federation Act. Post-locked box. Pass it. Status report.
Yes, sir.
Governor. Governor, before you begin, I think it would be very important to address the executive meeting that we had and what we did in that. Not what the subject, well, the subject was, but who were we talking to?
We were in consultation with the city's legal council. So that was the reason it was an executive session. Lawyers typically don't provide advice in public. Mayor, members of the board, let me very quickly go through a number of items that we have numbered before. First of all, status report on the wastewater project. Today was kind of one of those milestone days in the project. As we completed construction, we tested the two lift stations. And we found no major operational issues during that test. The crews are going to be installing some landscaping around those lift stations to make them maybe a little bit more appealing to the eye. Crews are also expected to wrap up construction on the wastewater treatment plant this month. Currently, they're working on the fence installation, which is a pretty substantial fence that's being put around the plant site itself. It's a TCQ required fence. And then also finishing work on the plant's electrical system. As you know, later at this meeting, you'll be considering the selection of a contractor to operate the wastewater system. The second meeting, potential wastewater customers, was held earlier this week. About 70 people in attendance. So we're going to be forcing some information to the customers via mail and email over the next few weeks. And we may even have another meeting before we get to the point of collection. But the meeting went really well. There was some information sharing that took place in there. The board will be asked to authorize construction of wastewater lines at the Celado ISD schools at the next meeting on February the 21st. I mentioned the fact that we tested the lift stations today. And I want to show you a few pictures to give you an idea of how things looked and how things went. This is the Church Street Lift Station. Give you an inside look. And the way we started the test was we simply pulled up to the manhole and started filling the manhole full of water. And of course, that water worked its way into the lift station itself. And you can see how it fills up. And then we activate it and begin the pumping process. And this is water that basically went from the Church Street Lift Station and it pushed its way all the way to the Royal Street Lift Station. A comparable test was conducted with the Royal Street Lift Station in which we forced that water uphill without problem to the treatment plant. The interesting thing about it, you can see the tank after we finished the pumping process at Church Street. The system itself is a monitor 24/7 through what's called SCADA. So it's an electronic monitoring system. As you know, we have a wireless communication system we installed as opposed to a radio transmission system. The original plans had called for actually the construction of a radio tower at the lift stations, which we felt was probably not the most attractive thing downtown. So we're wireless from that standpoint. But we have this SCADA monitoring system. And this SCADA monitoring system, as you can see in this particular slide, this is an example of, this is a screenshot from today's test as we were working on the Church Street Lift Station. And it actually monitors real-time data, the fluid coming in. And it monitors the real-time data when the pump's activated, what's going out, the rates, those type of things. It produces trends. It can give you an idea and a complete analysis of what's going on. When it gets to the treatment plant, this is an even more fascinating screenshot. And literally, this is the treatment plant from an aerial view that looks down. And we monitor every piece of this treatment plant with this electronic system. So this will be a monitored system that we will have in place here. But it's also one that our operator will have available and then 24/7 to monitor any type of situations. The system is set up of an alarm system. And we have backup pumps. We have backup floats, you know, from a standpoint of monitoring. So I think it's going to be a really good system. It really is a state-of-the-art wastewater system. And visiting with the contractors today, it was quite a coordination effort to get everybody together for that. But everything really did go very well. We've got some recalibration we need to do on some of the flow meters. But just thought you might be interested in seeing some of those pictures. Again, we will be scheduling a tour for the board to go see before we get to the point of completion on the plant. And then, of course, we're planning to have a public open house and a ribbon cutting when we're ready to first flush, if you will. Status report on Old Mill and Arrowhead Intersections. Groundwater has become a problem. As you know, as a result of all the rain we had over the fall and even during the summer months, we've had some significant groundwater punches in this particular area. Probably one of the most noticeable ones we've had in the neighborhood so far is the one at the intersection of Old Mill and Arrowhead. You see where there's been some asphalt failure on the north side of Old Mill. And it's dry around that area. But if you get out or start walking around, you'll realize it's extremely wet totally around that area. That yard, particularly to the south of Arrowhead, of Old Mill and Arrowhead, has had close to a half an inch to three-quarters of an inch of water across the yard for several months. And that is not a water leak from the water supply corporation. It's been tested. There's no chlorine residual. Literally, it's groundwater that's pushing through. It's pushing through. It's washing out base underneath the roadway and it's also damaging the asphalt. So in the coming days, the next few days, probably early next week, we'll have contractors in place. And they're going to go in there and install a French drain system. And that French drain system will be an L French drain that we'll install on Arrowhead and Old Mill. And we're going to try to capture the water from going under Old Mill to the west of that intersection. And then we're going to go down Arrowhead to the south and try to capture that water. All of that to try to catch it before it gets to the roadway. We're not getting on the private property. We're in the right of way. Our concern at this stage of the game is preserving what's left of the roadway. Then what we'll do is we'll come in and we'll pull back the asphalt, let it dry. There will be some closure time on that intersection while it dries out. And once we get the base in a situation that we're comfortable putting asphalt back on, we'll go back in and lay that pavement on it. Groundwater is a problem in this area in general. That, we feel, is probably one of the major culprits over on Celado Plaza Drive where we've had to spend so much money patching that particular area. And there are some very expensive solutions to that. And that's something that we may, at some point, have to look at down the road. But I think you're going to see more and more of this the weather, weather this particular area stays. The problem with these types of situations from a history standpoint is that they're like a game of whack-a-mole. And that is, you solve this problem and then it pops up over here. And then it pops up over here and you find yourself chasing. So the best thing to do is scrape for maybe a little bit of dry weather. So we have some opportunity for things to settle down a little bit. It's always great, though, to have a good source of getting out of groundwater. The thing to keep in mind also is the fact that this is evidence of the fact that it's not a problem that's restricted to down at the bottom of the hill, on the side of the hill. Because probably two of the biggest problems we face with, you know, at the wastewater treatment plant, we had to approve a contract amendment to go in and deal with the groundwater flow. We had, we actually had almost a small creek that was flowing. You know, the interesting thing is both of the big problems we've had have been at the top of the hill and not down at the bottom. So kind of interesting to look at that we're going to be working on that. That estimated cost is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to $20,000 going to fix that intersection. And that, of course, will come out of our road budget. Status report on the Celado Police Chief Service. We, as you know, closed the window of opportunity for applicants just a few, probably about 10 days ago. About 30 applications were received, a little under that. The applications have been thoroughly reviewed. Preliminary interviews have been completed. About five candidates will be going through an assessment center. We're anticipating the assessment center will take place a week from Tuesday. And then a new chief will be selected from the assessment center. As you know, Sergeant Matt Hicks is still in command of the Police Department and is doing an outstanding job of keeping the groups going and trying to keep the streets safe from that standpoint. We appreciate what he's doing. I will tell you this, as far as thoughts, as far as the applicant load that we've seen so far. And I'm extremely pleased with the quality of the applicants that we see, you know, in this particular city search. It was not what I was anticipating. I knew we were going to see some good ones. But the volume of quality applications, I think, says a lot about this city and a lot about the desire to come to this city and to help this city. I think you're going to be pleased when we see, when we see, when we get down to the finals and get to the selection of a chief, which hopefully will take place later this month. Status report on the May 2019 election. The filing period, as you may be well aware, is open for individuals interested in seeking a place on the Celado Board of Aldermen. The deadline to file for a place on the ballot is 5 o'clock next Friday, the 15th. So 5 o'clock next Friday. You can pick up a packet either here at City Hall or you can pick up an electronic copy here at City Hall or you can go online and download it. My strong suggestion is come by and pick up a hardcover from City Hall and use our paper and use our ink. Because I guarantee you, you'll be going to Best Buy to get some new printer. It's a thick packet, but it's important information and it, and we encourage all of the candidates to look at. As you know, we've got three seats that are up in this upcoming election. Early voting will begin on Monday, April 22nd. And it will end on Tuesday, April 30th. As you know, we'll be doing the early voting over at the Civic Center. In-person voting will take place at Civic Center vote for early voting as well as on Election Day. And of course, Election Day is on May the 4th. Status report on municipal bond, excuse me, municipal building audio improvements. We're talking about the City Council improvements, mayor, that you mentioned just a few minutes ago. This sound system, as we workshop, is in need of some significant improvements. We've had some citizens who have stepped up to the plate to offer to help the city cover some of those costs with about $2,000. We've talked about matching that and going out and also finding some additional money to do even more. The improvements we're talking about basically are looking at going in and putting in a new amplifier, some microphones, speakers, and some wireless earpieces to help folks out in the audience who may not be able to hear if they're sitting in the back of the room and the speakers aren't working real well. The estimated cost of improvements, $10,000 plus. We have been looking for outside grant sources. As you know, some citizens indicated there were some available. And I think some of those efforts at this stage of the game have not found the grant locations that we are looking for. So we're continuing our efforts to see if there's some additional grant money out there. If not, I think we're looking at doing probably in the next couple of weeks is breaking the project into phases and going through the process of maybe buying the first phase and just working our way through. And we're going to continue the search for grant funding sources as we try to improve the audio system in this building to help people out. Status report on the comprehensive plan. The Comprehensive Plan Update Committee wrapped up its work on the first ever review of the comprehensive plan last week. I see Kathy Zimes breathing a sigh of relief. She and her members were tirelessly, frankly, saying, "We're tiresly" for a couple of months every Tuesday. And they finished their work last week. They recommended several improvements. And the recommended improvements to the plan will be presented at a joint meeting of that committee, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the Board of Aldermen. That joint workshop will take place next week on the 11th at 5:30 PM right here at City Hall. At that point, we will unveil the recommendations to the three bodies and give them an opportunity to discuss and hear the thought process behind those recommendations. From that point, there's an approval process that we'll then proceed with. They'll take those amendments that have been recommended by the committee, they being the PNC and the Board, and the PNC will get its first stab at it, and they will hold a public hearing, and then they will consider those amendments and any additional they would like to make, and then forward those on to the Board of Aldermen, and the Board of Aldermen will then consider the amendments, hold a public hearing on those, and make final action. It's gonna be Board approval that will basically indicate when the amendments are made for that plan. So we'll post all of that information online as the process progresses. So again, we'd like to thank members of the committee for the time. It literally was a three or four-month process and an awful lot of time. This is the city's first review of the comprehensive plan. Stats report on the Main Street Improvement Project. As you know, bids were open this week on the Main Street Improvement Project. We indicated that was gonna happen a few weeks ago. The planned improvements include construction of sidewalks on both sides of Main Street, installation of decorative street lighting, drainage improvements, installation of bike lanes, and also some parking enhancements downtown. The preliminary cost estimates from TechStop put the project cost at about $4.1 million. When they opened the bids, the low bid came in at about $5.2 million. So they're about a million over what their projected cost was. TechStop has indicated need not panic, they want to go through the bids and work through those. They're very pleased with the quality of contractors, which I think is important. They're very pleased with the quality of contractors who chose to submit, and they will be reviewing those bids and then kind of going through those and combing through those over the next few days to see how they want to proceed. They'll also be looking at their funding sources. As you know, this is a project that's funded with money from the MPO but also directly from TechStop. So we're hopeful that we will see some work soon on that project beginning. We'll keep you updated on the timeline. Status report on sales tax collections. Just wanted to let you know very briefly that we received our February check. We'll have a complete report on sales tax at the next meeting, but we received our February check yesterday. That check representing December sales, it totaled some $52,809.21, which is up about seven percent. So no, that's the old one. So I said we'll have a complete report on that at the next meeting. But we're up seven percent, which I think is good. This is actually not typically our highest month, as we talked about this at the last meeting, our January check normally is our largest check. So good news as far as sales tax goes, as we saw some pretty significant growth here in the holiday season. That's all we've got, Mayor.
My goodness, that's a lot. Just a couple of things I want to say. Number one, the water situation we were talking about, what's coming up through the asphalt. I didn't realize that, but there truly is water that comes up. I know a table walk called me one day, and one other, and looked, and Ricky Preston and his people came over and looked, and this stream is just coming up underneath it. So you're exactly right about that. Oh, I do want to also ask you about the wastewater project update. It's working, huh? It's working, right?
That which we've tested so far is working, and it's flowing uphill.
And I wanted to hear you say that one more time.
It's flowing uphill.
That too, but we also want to...
But no, as we all know, it also flows down.
Trying to give you a compliment, Don.
It's working, and I will tell you, to give people a few facts, you know, from a standpoint of running the waste from this lift station at Church Street to Royal Street, it took about 20 minutes to get there, and it took about 52 minutes to hit the treatment plant for Royal Street, to give you an idea. So it worked well, and like I said, we're doing some recalibration. The beautiful thing about it is we're gonna be able to monitor it. It's gonna be pretty darn special.
One more time, it worked, right?
It does work.
Okay. Every now and then, maybe more than ever now and then, there's a rumor. Who says? Oh, they're tricking you. It is not working, and it never will work. Don, is it working?
It's working.
Okay, that's good. I just want to make that public. Well, just to go there. About ready to get a new police chief, and Matt's been doing it.
Matt's been doing it tremendously.
He has?
He has.
Matt, come give your report.
All right. Way more people here than last time.
They all wanted to come and hear your report.
I don't like this public speaking stuff. All right. Oh, we gonna start, you gonna start with that first, or do the monthly report first?
I'll do monthly report.
Okay. Real quick for the monthly report. Good afternoon, everybody. So this month, we had a little bit of drop in calls for service. We had 425, it only dropped from 487, so no huge drop. Written reports went way up. We were busy. We took 29 written reports. We had 12 in December. Citations were 94, warnings 221. Our rest went up again this month. We had 10. Last month, we had six. Wide range of stuff. Response times, our priority one dropped again. Our response times on the average were two minutes and eight seconds to a priority one call. The priority two calls increased, probably due to the 27 traffic accidents at the beginning of the month. It was three minutes and 58 seconds. Still not terrible. And our priority three calls' response times dropped as well, five minutes and three seconds. For the cops activities that I have this month, we had 12 total shifts, eight days recovered, 24 total hours, and they found four open doors. I think, first, I want to go over some stuff with the cops unit real quick.
Sure. We met, Matt and I met the other day with the cops organization, which, again, I think both of us would say how much we appreciate their volunteer efforts and the time that they put in. It's an amazing group of people. One of the things they've asked for is they've asked for expansion of duties, and so we have worked together and come up with a couple of projects that they might be able to do other than the normal door shaking that they do and kind of the eye-watching downtown at night and those type of things. And they're working, and they're gonna be talking a little bit more about the details of a program that is a program that's intended to try to help prevent auto theft. You may recall a few years ago, the state of Texas had a program called HEAT, which was an acronym for Help End Auto Theft, H-E-A-T. And basically, it's a program that involved the marking of your vehicle, and if that vehicle was found on the streets after a certain hour at night, it basically, you sign a sheet of paper when you enter for the program, basically authorizing law enforcement to stop your vehicle, to find out who's driving it and to make sure it's supposed to be out on the street and it's being driven proactively by somebody who's supposed to be driving. So the state had that program, and it ran its course, and they disbanded it a couple of years ago, but it's a program that I think we're gonna try to resurrect in Selayo, to be specific to Selayo. And we're gonna try to encourage the cops organization to participate and kind of launch that program. Mr. Nathanson and I met this week, and he's gonna be presenting more information to the group as a whole to basically work on a formal adoption and implementation program. But the way it would work is they would have registration events, like regular registration events, but also special activities, be it scroll, you know, activities of broochers, whatever, where there are community gatherings, at school activities, those type of things, where they would encourage people to register their vehicles. And if that vehicle is found on the streets of Selayo, you know, by our police officers, we're gonna walk and see if we can get the constable to participate in it to, that if the vehicle is found on the street and they notice the sticker, then it gives them the ability to stop the vehicle just to check on it, make sure everything's okay, and make sure everything's in order, and the right person's driving the vehicle. It's a great program. It's an easy program to implement, and we think in this type of community, it would be a big success because this community is very active and involved and has been proud of it. So we thought we'd let you know what's coming down, and you'll be hearing more hopefully from Mr. Nathanson. We'll get him to come and make a presentation when they get to that.
Real quick, the police department, our long guns are purchased and fully equipped. Thank you very much. We're all qualified, and there are each vehicle, so if bad stuff happens, we have them right there at our leisure. Of course, we still have our rifle-resistant vest and stuff like that. Officer Duncy has completed his Caliber Press Training Class in San Antonio. Thank you for sending him to that. It was a two-day seminar. Very great for new officers of professional street survival. It's a huge reminder in the safety aspects and a couple of different training points for him. So the next thing we've gotta do, what everybody loves in police work, is the racial profiling and the UCR reports. So it's required reporting under the state of Texas for racial profiling. We report every single motor vehicle stop, not just traffic stops. So if it's suspicious vehicle, stuff like that, we report it. Any and all stops under the law resorting to warnings, citations, and/or arrests, tracked by races identified by the state of Texas and by statute. We report searches conducted during the stop, if we do them or not. It must be reported by the race if it is known prior to the stop. That's a huge thing. Those reports are due by the first of March, and I can tell you, I submitted to T-CO today, and they accepted my report, so we're compliant for one more year, no fines. But one more back, back to UCR. UCR, it's Uniform Crime Reporting. We do it state-level, and then the FBI kind of changes some titles. They're kind of funky with their titles, but offenses are, every offense that is taken by law enforcement that fits into the category is put into the UCR, not only arrest. Separated into 31 main categories, and there's a couple of subcategories under there. It's a lot. Required to report by the seventh day of each month. That was completed last night, so that's completed as well. Submitted to the Texas DPS Uniform Crime Reporting. We moved to a system called NIBRs that y'all probably heard of a couple of months back, that we got approved for the grant funding for that through the state of Texas. It's a whole lot easier to do it that way, and then the FBI also uses those numbers for statistics nationwide. So racial profiling for 2018, we contacted a total of 1,687 stops. We issued 687 citations, 922 warnings, and 78 arrests out of those traffic stops. Searches, we searched a total of 88 cars. 24 of that was on consent, 53% was a problem cause, developed by the officer. Eleven was other, other falls into inventory of arrest, stuff like that. Contra ban found 58, so out of those 88 stops, 58 times contra ban was located. Forty-three of those searches, narcotics or drug equipment was located, four times weapons, six times was alcohol, and other is a fault to like money or just random, random stuff. So this is, Mr. Ferguson wanted me to present a little bit of a comparison between last year and this year. As you can see, our traffic stats went up pretty good. Citations rose, our warnings also rose, it was quite a bit, and our arrests also went up as well. So it was kind of a busy year for us compared to last year. Our searches, they stayed about the same, not really surprised by it at all. Contra ban located went down by one. Consent, I'll let you see, no red flags or anything with that. Problem cause is still there, other's still there. So racial profiling by race in 2018, so out of our numbers for Hispanics, written and citations for warnings and stuff, 262, so that's 15% of our stops we stopped Hispanics. White, Caucasian, 1,231, so 70, almost 73% of our stops we stopped Caucasian, white. 173 were to blacks, that's about almost 11%, 10 and a half. Asians, 18, so right at 1%. Native American, 3. That's not even 1%. And other, well, you can usually figure out who they are, and then altogether, the whole number of 1687. So Uniform Crime Reporting, it's also known as UCR for 2018, so these are all the offenses and/or arrests that were made by the Selayo Police Department. So assaults, both family violence and against just a regular person. Oh, I don't know why I thought we were supposed to delete it. Sorry, that was last year. So five, we had five reported UCRs. Burglaries, we had eight. Drug abuse violations, we had 33 this year. Driving under the influence or DWI's, we're at 30. Forgerys, checks, stuff like that, we had three. Marsony, another fancy word for thefts, are 14. Motor vehicle thefts, we have one this year. Rapes or sexual assaults, we have five this year. And then robberies, we had that one. Sorry about the one on the left, I forgot to delete those. So this is just a graph comparing last year to this year. So we've had obviously just a little bit of an increase in assaults. That happens. The more we, people are educated about family violence, the more stuff comes out. So awareness is always there. I, it's a possibility that some of it's going unreported, but that's just the name of the game. Our burglaries, it went way down. We had that rash last year, but they were arrested and prosecuted, so we had, I think it was eight this year. Drug abuse violations, they went a little bit down, but not a major increase, so it's still there. Our DWI's rose, we're at 30. Forgerys went down, thefts went down, motor vehicle thefts went down, sexual assaults increased, and then of course, that robbery, we had that one robbery. He's in jail waiting prosecution. So stats and contact, so overall, this is from last year to this year, so every time a contact law enforcement radioed in, we called that one. Last year was 2479, and this year was 3443, so we had an increased call for service, so that's gonna continue to rise. So in closing, we, the Selayo Police Department operates in a fair and consistent manner with racial makeup of the community. There's no evidence of racial profiling used by officers to make enforcement decisions, and there's no complaints in 2018, and no evidence of racial profiling. Questions?
Matt, that is absolutely excellent.
Sweet. Very last time.
It truly is. Now, how long have you been doing this with us as far as being the chief of police?
Rick went out on surgery, so I kind of stepped in that role, middle of December, so two months.
You know, you guys have just brought that police department, boy, all of us are working together and being a good team, and should make us all sort of very, very more comfortable at now for the stuff that's off done, from weapons to new cars to everything else that goes with it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Shane.
Hello.
You've got a hard act to follow, Shane.
Mine's gonna be short and sweet. Mayor Alderman, I have the calls for the month of January. We had 25 AMS calls in the city. We had 26 AMS calls in the county. We had two fire calls in the city. We had nine fire calls in the county. We had nine motor vehicle accidents in the city. We had seven motor vehicle accidents in the county. That's my report for January.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last remark. Could you please repeat that again?
I said this is, this is a report for January. This is it.
Shane, could you take some lessons from me? I don't know. I had a Shane this last couple of Saturdays ago, and what you've done for that part of the year is really, really remarkable. It's so good. Thank you for all the leadership and all the... Well, Chadlin.
How are you doing?
Good, Chadlin, how are you?
I'm doing well, doing well, thank you. So real short for you, from me as well, the first thing is on the marketing bit, social media, the first part of that, is growing well and regularly and steadily, and we're just posting regularly, getting some growth with these accounts, more followers. We're gonna start doing social media ads very soon, so that follower count and the engagement will probably increase with that. We just finished our first flight of an ad. It was a native article that we put out. Just a little bit of information on that. It went really well, we had good engagement. We got, I guess, about 3,000 people actually engaged with it, went to the website, and that was a lot more than expected. And so, to kind of give you a little bit of an insight as to what we're doing with this, a little sample of the data, it's, I noticed that about 35% of the people that engaged with the ad were in Houston. And so what I do with that then is I go talk to the hoteliers, and I'm trying to figure out, are we getting a lot of people from Houston? And we actually are. And that, nobody ever told me that before, and that's not anyone's job to know that, but that's one of the reasons we're using, that's one way we're using this digital data, is to try to figure out who's coming. uh, that's one way we're using this digital data, um, is to try to figure out who's coming here and who's interested in coming here. Uh, for whatever reason, Houston folks were more interested in our ads. Um, and over time, we'll get more and more data. We'll maybe understand that a little better. Um, so the next thing is, uh, events. There's, uh, the event calendar's starting to fill up a lot. Um, you've got stuff going throughout the weeks and then you've got your spring events that are coming up. I'm trying to engage with those, um, event planners as much as possible, uh, everything from things with the Chamber of Commerce, uh, things at the brewery, there's a winery event. Um, and, and other things you'd probably be aware of, uh, Texas Road and Wine, our festival, Wildflower Festival, uh, are coming up quick. So trying to help them make sure that goes well.
Very good, Chadlin. Very, very good. The meeting that I was with, uh, I think, uh, this last week, uh, dealt with the historic days, getting ready for June second. What is that gonna be?
Uh, June, I always forget. It's that seventh, eighth, ninth, that weekend. I forget the numbers.
It's really gonna be fantastic. You've already started advertising for the election.
It will be.
Yes. Well, honestly, um, we don't get an opportunity to, to really ask Chadlin a lot of questions. Would y'all like to ask him some questions? Well, Chadlin, when they don't ask questions, I'm the only one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, that's all the, uh, that's all the announcements and reports that we have for this evening. We're gonna go into the business of the public hearings and possible action. Hold a public and consider approval of an ordinance for the village of Salado, Texas. Changing the zoning from historic district to public facility for approximately eight point four-four acres. Generally located south and north of Pace Park Road. And east of IH thirty-five, also known as Pace Park in Salado, Vail County, Texas. And providing for the following: severity, effective date, and proper notice and meeting. Don?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of board. Let me start off first of all, the, the next two items on the agenda are what are called zoning cases. We don't see zoning cases a lot in this community. Uh, and, and so I thought it would probably be a, a good educational piece for the board as well as members of the audience to understand what zoning is. And zoning is the city's way of regulating land use, uh, and determining what is the best, best land use, uh, for the community via a comprehensive plan, via our master plan. Uh, these decisions that this board makes when it comes down to zone properties are not decisions that are made by their preference. They're decisions that are supposed to be made by taking several things into consideration. Uh, they're serious decisions. They're land use decisions. The thing to also keep in mind about zoning is zoning can change at any time. Just because this board may zone a piece of property, something, doesn't mean it stays that way in perpetuity. It means it can change, you know, at any time, uh, via the property owner's request and/or via the city's request. Uh, but, uh, it's important to understand that it is not a final say for that property and the history of that property from here on out. Uh, when considering a zoning change, uh, the commission, uh, the board, uh, should consider the following items. Uh, whether the use is permitted by the proposed change will be appropriate in the immediate area concerned and their relationship to the general area and the village as a whole. Whether the proposed change that's being requested is in accord with any existing or proposed plans for providing public schools, food, water supplies, sanitary sewers, or other utilities in the area. The amount of vacant land currently classified for similar development in the vicinity and elsewhere in the village in any special circumstances which may make a substantial part of such vacant land unavailable for development. The recent rate at which the land is being developed in the same zoning classification as the zoning request, particularly in the vicinity of the proposed zoning change. Also supposed to consider how other areas designated for similar development will be or are unlikely to be affected if the proposed amendment, the proposed zoning change is approved. And other factors, uh, that will substantially affect public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I think it's important to understand that probably the overriding item in all of these is the comprehensive plan. Cities are required by law to have a master plan. It's called a comprehensive plan. And one of the key pieces of that comprehensive plan is a land use plan. And it basically is, is kind of the city's, uh, pathway to the future. It's, it's, it's basically, uh, our snapshot of how we envision this community developing and how we see this land and this community being used. So it's important when they consider zoning changes that they consider how that zoning change fits into the comprehensive plan. Ideally, cities should try to zone their properties in accordance with their comprehensive plan. And so those are kind of the key factors that you look at in, in the zoning process. In this particular case, this zoning case, we call this case the Pace Park rezoning request. As you mentioned, mayor, it's just over eight acres. It's located along the Salado Creek and within the historic district, generally north and south of Pace Park Road. Uh, the future land use map in the comprehensive plan designates this property as public park. The current zoning designation is historic district. The proposed zoning designation, public facility, PIA, uh, which permits public parks. Justification for the rezoning is to zone the property in accordance with the comprehensive plan and to mask the property's historic use. Pace Park is a unique piece of property. And Pace Park is a, is a piece of property that for its lifetime will remain a park. Uh, as you know, it, it is basically in a trust. The city is the sole trustee and we are obligated through court action to keep this park as a public park and operated as a public park. Uh, our feeling is, our staff's position on this situation is that we need to zone it as such. And then classify it as a public facility, uh, as public park under public facilities, uh, and keep it that way from, from basically this point on in this situation. Uh, we notified about twenty properties within, uh, two hundred feet of the area. We received one response against it. Uh, and it was from a Mr. Foster who said that he wanted the city to basically leave businesses and property owners alone. Uh, so we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The P and Z had a good discussion. Uh, there were some concerns expressed, uh, by some in the audience and by some members of the commission about, uh, whether this zoning would impact, uh, the historic, uh, position of this park, its, its, its role in the historic district, uh, the historic overlay area itself. Uh, we pointed out that it really does, this is a land use designation. Uh, and, and then by taking that historic designation away from it, that we're not doing anything as far as taking this property out of the historic overlay. It's designating as land use as it's been used historically. Back said, the commission voted against the zone, uh, and recommended denial on this particular case. So it's before you tonight for consideration. Our staff's recommendation continues to be that you, that you zone a public facilities park, public park, and to move forward on that. So it's before you, mayor, for public hearing and action.
Any questions, Sir Don, please, before I entertain a motion? Any questions?
Sure. So Don, if, if we leave it, uh, like it currently is zoned, uh, what versus, uh, making the, uh, the rezoning, exactly what's the difference? What would happen if we leave it? What would happen if we, uh, go ahead and, uh, vote to make this zone change?
In this particular case, it's always gonna be a public park. Uh, but our feeling is this, and that is it's, it's a park that's operated by the city, by the village. And in the future, we plan to develop that particular park. As we develop that particular park, it's important that we go out and seek funding sources. And one of the things that we find when we go to agencies like Texas Parks and Wildlife and some of these other organizations that are key contributors to parks, is they want to see some type of designation of that as a park, some type of public declaration, uh, and, and, and some type of zoning protection for that is always a way to demonstrate that. So we feel that that's an important reason to do this, in addition to the court position that you need to know that this is a public park and will remain a public park from here on out. So, uh, it doesn't change it. I, I stress, and I really want to stress this, and that is there's a, there's a disconnect in our zoning code that we're gonna try to correct post-comprehensive plan, uh, as far as the amendments that we're fixing to do. And the comprehensive plan calls for a historic overlay. We don't have a historic overlay designated per se through ordinance. And that's one of the things you're gonna hear in your recommendations at next week's workshop is that we literally go in and implement an overlay district, basically designate a historic zoning area by ordinance. What we did was we took what was in the original comprehensive plan, uh, and, and they, instead of creating the overlay, they for some reason created a historic zoning district. As far as, instead of a historic zoning overlay. This particular piece of property is gonna be in the middle of the historic overlay. There are no plans. In fact, the comprehensive plan proposes to widen that proposed boundary for a historic overlay when we create that. So this is gonna be in the middle of it and it's not gonna go out of the historic overlay. It's gonna remain the historic overlay. And it's an important piece of the historic overlay, especially in this community system.
So if we, if we rezone it, we won't be changing the historic value of this piece of property to our, our village and our heritage?
No, sir. It's a land use designation.
That's all I have.
Other questions, please? I'll entertain a motion, please. Public hearings work this way here. You will have the opportunity to either speak for or against. You have three minutes. I will come out of this session, go into a public hearing session. And I'll ask three times. One, does anyone wish to speak? If someone's, does want to speak, they will come up to the podium and they will speak whatever they want for three minutes. Two, if no one comes, then I go to three. At the end of three, if they're already at that time, then I will close it and we will come back into this meeting. And at that time, we will, I will entertain a motion. So, we're coming out. The time now is seven thirty. We're now going into the public hearing. First of all, anyone, anyone who would like to speak?
Judy Thales, eight eighteen Baylock Circle, Salado, Texas. Again, I would ask the board to seriously consider why the P and Z voted no. Don unfortunately didn't explain that. And I would like for you all to understand that we are in support, uh, what the P and Z is recommending. And they're recommending no.
Yeah, I'm John Cole, fourteen twenty Old Mill Road in Salado. In support of the question Mr. Cole gonna ask, I was at the P and Z meeting a week or so ago and a lot of people were confused on what the benefit of the change. I think you need to pour that a little, a little bit more emphasis on that because people are still confused. You know, is the park gonna be better if we rezone it or is it not gonna be better? Is it gonna be better maintained by the city to, for the serene part? I think that's the big question. People just don't know what the benefit of the rezoning is. I think you need to clarify that and calm a lot of fears in the city. Thank you.
Jody Lander, ten twelve Wilford Drive. I spoke at the zoning board. And I want it to be a park and I don't have a problem with that. I see the purpose of it. I think a lot of us do not want to see it changed until we know that historic overlay is in place to protect it because it needs to be a different type of park. Like, one of the things they're recommending is the use of the stones and trees to, for the parking, as opposed to putting metal barriers out there. We want to make sure that those type of things are maintained now and in the future, when the wonderful people who have been taking care of the history of Salado are no longer here, if we don't get a next generation to continue it. We want to make sure that gets preserved.
Mayor, I think that was one of the ideas, if I can jump in, that the P and Z had mentioned in their denial was that they were interested in the historic overlay and maybe coming back and visiting after historic overlay. I will tell you as a point of addition, that, that to help clarify and then hopefully allay some concerns, this board adopted an improvement plan for Pace Park several months ago. And interfling throughout that improvement plan were projects that were intended to display, project, and enhance the educational piece about the history of that park. Uh, so I think the Parks Board presented to the board a plan that was very sensitive to that and I think they're dedicated to that.
First call is coming to an end. Second call for anyone who wished to speak.
Linda Reynolds, five oh seven Santa Rosa. Uh, I spoke before the planning and zoning. I appreciated that they, uh, uh, voted against changing the zoning. Uh, I did, I wasn't against the change. I just wanted in the amend, in the ordinance for it to say public facility, if you must, instead of public park, public facility within the historic district. Um, at one point that was added and then it was subtracted. I'm not exactly sure why we can't say in the change within the historic district. Is there a difference between a historic district and historic overlay? As near as I can tell, and this may be confusion, uh, in a historic overlay, you can take land out and develop it in some way and call it and give it a cup and turn it into commercial. Uh, I, I think I want to understand why we can't say, uh, public, uh, facility within the historic district. About a hundred, or about, uh, uh, I'm reading from Bill Kennison and Maybelle, uh, Brown, Tim Brown's mom, who's now deceased. Uh, that, uh, this city began, village began abruptly, some people feel, in October eight, nineteen, eighteen fifty-nine when Elijah Sterling Clark Robertson donated a hundred acres of land. In my mind, being a part of the historic district, that hundred acres is historic land. Uh, generations of Native Americans principally, and I've never heard this Native American before, Tonkawa, uh, occupied this area prior to the arrival of settlers from Mexico and the United States. They were flintworking, hunting people who came to Salado Creek for the clean water always available and the abundance of flint along the banks. In Pace Park, the Texas Historical Commission recovered Indian artifacts dating to the archaic period, six thousand B.C. to five hundred A.D. That's right in our backyard. That's Pace Park. It's somewhat historic. Uh, there are twenty sites with state historical markers, including Salado Creek. Not only do we have a hundred acres of land that is historical, but we have a creek that is historical by the Texas Natural Landmark designated by the Texas Historical Society Committee. Texas Historical Commission markers are on, and then all the other properties that are in our ordinance. The land itself is historical. The creek is historical. Pace Park is historical. Let's keep it in the historical district. Put it in the ordinance that way, please. Thank you.
Mayor, there'd be no problem putting it within the boundaries of the historic overlay. I would say historic overlay.
We're still on the second call. Anyone who would like to speak?
Mark Rice, twenty thirteen Indian Trail. Um, actually, I'm for the change. Uh, wherever in Denton, Texas, there was a city pound that was originally, uh, a city water thing became unused property. And they got the state fines to change it to a park and they had two point four million dollars. And they changed it to a different park, a better park, a safer park, it was more used by people. And they did not significantly change the outline of the park. So what I see is we'll have more money to approve the park, a better chance to preserve the historical artifacts because we have the money to keep them from crumbling. And so it could be overlaid as a historical district, but I think making the park gives us the money and the support from the state to maintain the historical thing and also make the park more usable and more desirable as a place for people to go.
Thank you, sir. Last call. This is call number three.
Katie Hill, twelve twenty-one Bings. I guess I have a point of order. May I speak as a P and Z member? Okay.
Katie, lift the microphone up.
Sure. So I just, I wanted to clarify, um, the reason that I voted. Sure. So I just, I wanted to clarify the reason that I voted. I can't speak for the entire commission. But the reason I voted against it was because we have this new comprehensive plan coming out. We have new language with the historic overlay language that doesn't exist yet. I wanted this to go in the order of, here's the plan, here's the language. I don't want to put a Band-Aid on these parks and then feel like ripping it off in two months. That, that'll be embarrassing, and it'll be confusing even more for the public. I, I voted against these parks designation right now, because I don't know that there is any need to rush. Maybe there is, and I don't know. But it made sense to me to create this language going forward, this updated comprehensive plan, which is going to get rid of some of the confusion with historic district and the other districts. And then designate this park as a public facility park that it has always been. That, that was my reason, and if there's a rush, I guess so. But I wanted you to hear it from me, that I don't want to put the cart before the horse.
Thank you, Katie. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Tim Fleischer, nine one two Cedar Park Circle. And I'd like to give some, some information on why we have a historic district in our comprehensive plan. Because during the meetings with Duncan Seftco, one of the things that, that the engineer, planning engineer told those committee members was that you did not want spot zoning throughout your town. You didn't want it to look like a polka dotted map of commercial zone here, office zone here, restaurant zone here, so on and so forth. And then put an overlay of a historic overlay on top of a patchwork of, of different zoning districts on individual pieces of property. So he told the group that initially drew up that comprehensive plan to come up with the idea of the historic district, and then to offer, then to have many different land uses under that. You would have commercial land uses, the ability to operate bed and breakfasts, the, the ability to have a dentist's office, the ability to have a residence, all these different land uses under the historic district zone. And he told us repeatedly to draw, to paint zones with big, broad paintbrush strokes, not polka dots and not cherry cores. So he warned us not to spot zone. And if you look at our zoning map, we don't, we don't have a lot of different zoning districts or pock marks of them. So, and, and that was following the advice of, of a, well, I don't know, a regional planner that does those things for a living. That's why we have a historic district as a district zoning designation, rather than a historic district overlay with lots of different zoning districts underneath it.
Thank you.
Mayor, a point of clarification. We do not have spot zoning in this city. Spot zoning is a legal term in relation to land use zoning. What you have is land use zoning, and, and you have the historic overlay that is called for in the comprehensive plan that doesn't exist. We have historic districts, which is a land use zoning designation. And we have an overlay that's identified in the comprehensive plan that we do not have in place and protected by ordinance at this time. You allow those types of uses that Mr. Fleischer pointed out. Those are land use designations that are normally established through the creation of zoning districts. Spot zoning is a totally different animal than with reference.
Sure.
Yes.
Hello? Would I ask you a question, Joe?
Tim, with, with all that said, are you in favor of us voting to rezone it or not?
I don't have an opinion on rezoning that property. I just know why. Because I covered those meetings, why we drew a historic district zoning designation. And spot zoning is a, is a legal definition, and, and the definition of spot zoning is when you zone one piece of property at a time, rather than zoning an area. Could it apply to a large piece of property like eight acres, or a small piece of property like? Those are the kind of things that end up, if you have a contentious zoning issue, perhaps if this zoning were being applied to someone who didn't want their property zoned that way. If you weren't zoning the similar neighbors that way, then that's what spot zoning is.
Thank you.
Yes, Charlene Walsh, one zero zero one Milford Drive. I was a member of the committee who first wrote or put together comprehensive plan and zoning, and I'd like to support what Tim said, as well as, because spot zoning is what we really need to be aware of, be careful of. And that is exactly what almost happened when, when the sanctuary zoning questions came up to the P and Z back in twenty, was it twenty fifteen? The, Mr. Billy Hanks Jr. wanted that three point one two acres on, right next to College, or the ruins of the first college in Texas. He wanted that zone commercial. Commercial means you can put a car lot, a drive-through restaurant, a gas station, a welding shop, a garage, whatever. And, and it is, and that particular piece of property completely surrounded by properties within the historic district, which I believe to be the historic overlay, really. And, and Tim is right. Dan Seftco told us all, broad strokes with zoning, give leeway. But he said, "commercial," "commercial" is really different. Everything in the current historic district is owned retail, not commercial, not mixed use, not a planned development. It's owned retail, which means you could have a house here, you can have an office there, you can have, you can have a store there. You just, and you can have a sit-down restaurant. You just can't have a drive-through or a gas station. Why? Because nobody on that committee wanted to see the golden arches from Main Street. We wanted to preserve our history. And we were afraid with fast food restaurants, barrages, and all the other commercial businesses that go along with that designation, you'd lose it. So, and, and so that is why the P and Z voted unanimously to not zone that three point one two acres on top of College Hill next to the ruins of the first college in Texas. They, they all unanimously voted not to rezone that commercial. It would have been spot zoning. They recognized it was totally surrounded by other uses. By, it was totally, in the, in historic district and, or overlay, and it was, commercial use would not be, would not, would not fit in to any of the uses within retail zoning. So, and spot zoning is illegal. You can look it up. So that's what I have to say. Thank you. If you have any questions, talk to me.
Thank you, Dawn. Last call. Public hearing is closed. The time is seven fourteen.
Mayor, for the record, spot zoning is the application of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zoned area, when the zoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan or current zoning regulations. Your master plan calls those properties parks. So we're trying to zone those properties accordingly, and to benefit the city from a standpoint of future planning opportunities. And also to be consistent and to reemphasize a court rule. We're not doing spot zoning. That's just the definition. Take the text.
Three questions to Dawn. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to rezone the property known as Pace Park from H.D. to P.F.
Sir, a second.
Alderman, Coachman, would you be willing to accept an amendment that would say with the property remaining within the historic overlay district?
I don't think that's purport yet, Dawn. I'll explain why in a minute. Settle.
Motion has been made. The second is now. We can have a discussion.
Okay, let me see if I can, can clarify some things here. When we started this comprehensive plan review, and I don't know if Jim's still here or if he made it tonight, we discovered that there were things that our forefathers did in two thousand and four when this plan was established that the Board of Alderman never followed through on. And two of those were the establishment of P.F., which, uh, public facilities and private facility use of land. We did not have those designations within our ordinances or our laws. So at the last couple of meetings, we took care of that. Not to go with the new comprehensive plan, but to address the original comprehensive plan of two thousand and four. So what we're doing is, we're actually cleaning up the original plan in order to establish that base to do the new plan, the amended plan. So what we're trying to do is get our public parks in the right place with our original comprehensive plan. So the public use of land is one thing that we did not have in our ordinances. We now have it. So we wanted to now put the parks, the two pieces we're talking about, and we'll do the same thing with the Serena Park. We're trying to put them in the existing comprehensive plan use. So we're doing that cleanup, and then we'll come in and we're going to talk about establishing the overlay district, which actually is a little more constrictive.
It's more protective.
It's more protective of historic district than what we have now. Go in and look at our zoning districts now. There's a, a small portion of the historic district. It's not that restrictive what we currently have in law. So the comprehensive plan is, we're going to try to make the historic district more restrictive as to what you can do within the boundary of that, and we are expanding those borders of the historic district and trying to incorporate some other properties around the village that we do feel are historic that are not currently included in that boundary. So all we're doing right now is cleaning up what we already have. That's the point of where we are and why we created those two new districts, to go with what has already been deemed that we're supposed to do by the existing comprehensive plan. So that's what we're trying to, to accomplish tonight. I hope you understand that.
Well, and you're going to see in the comprehensive plan that you're going to present to them next week, these properties are dead center in the middle of the overlay district that you're proposing to create.
Exactly. And the reason why I don't want to put that wording within the historic district is because we're really going to do away with H.D. and make it H.O.D., Historic Overlay District. So then I think if you want to come back and amend saying, "within the historic overlay district," it would be appropriate. But the board has not adopted that particular type of zoning yet. So, this is my point for doing this. We're trying to clean up what we already have established within the village from two thousand and four, and it hasn't been done in, what is that, fourteen years? Within that timeframe. So we're trying, we're playing catch-up here, basically, with what our forefathers asked us to do. Thank you.
Other discussion, please.
Well, my concern is that we're, that we're sort of putting the cart before the horse in that it seems like the logical thing to do would be to complete our comprehensive plan, get all the zoning identifiers in place, and then go back and look at how you would approach rezoning Pace Park. So, I would support your, your motion if we put it off stage after the comprehensive plan has been looked at and adopted.
Mr. Cogan, it's already in the comprehensive plan. It's in the existing comprehensive.
Call for that as a park. And it's a use that's consistent, and it's historic and consistent with the area.
And also by deed of the property, it's to be operated as a public park.
Other discussion, please. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise. Passes. Number B. Hold the public hearing and consider approval at the ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, changing the zoning from historic district, H.D., to public facility, P.F., for approximately one point one acres, generally located south of the Salado Creek, north of College Hill Drive, east of IH thirty-five, and west of Main Street, more specifically known as Serena Park in Salado, Bell County, Texas, and providing for the following severe ability, effective date, and proper notice and medium. Dawn?
Yes, sir. Mayor members of the board, this is your second zoning case tonight. We call this particular case the Serena Park rezoning. The property description, as you pointed out, was one point one eight acres. It's located along the Salado Creek and within the historic district, north of College Hill Drive, east of IH thirty-five, and west of Main Street. I think we all know where it is. It's located basically on the creek right there at the bridge on the, that would be, what, south, west of the bridge. A future land use map designates it as public park. That's the future land use map in the comprehensive plan. The current zoning designation is historic district from the original zoning of the properties in that area. Proposed zoning designation is public facilities, which permits public park. Justification for the rezoning, as much the same as the other, with the exception of the court involvement, and is to zone the property in accordance with the comprehensive plan, number one, which calls it to be a public park. Number two, to match the historic property use from that standpoint, and also to put the city in a position to the point where it has the ability to go out and seek additional funding to help improve and protect that particular park. As I stressed before, much the same as, as the previous case, it's smack dab in the middle of what is called for in the comprehensive plan, the historic area, and there's no plan to change. So it's before you for public hearing and consideration. P and Z heard the situation. Katie's argument, that she presented her side, was much what we heard from P and Z. Their motion was to deny their recommendation and make reconsidered if and when we create the overlay.
Questions to Dawn, please.
So in the meantime, that would be denying applications for, for monetary assistance. Settle.
It's going to heed you for going out and seeking grant money. I can tell you that, you know, one of the things that, that they seek is some evidence of the fact that property is dedicated, protected, and a public park. And then one of the ways you show that is through zoning. You also show that through the designation, the public designation of the park.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions to Dawn, please. As I did last time, I'm coming out of this meeting. The time is seven fifty-seven. Everything that I said before, you understood and did perfectly well. First call.
Mark Rice, twenty thirteen Indian Trail. I am for this, the same as for Pace Park. More money, better able to preserve, and on top of that, this is a much higher use area, which means it's a higher maintenance area because there's more people. So there's going to be more trampling, there's going to be more trash, there's more, more chances of, of damage. So this, I think, protects the park, and also if there are historical items found of value, it gives us a means of having the money to preserve those things, because this was the area where the Indians got their water. And so this is the area where we're most likely to find something of real historical significance. And so this gives us the ability to seek the money to protect and maintain it as a park.
Thank you. This is the first call. Anyone wishing to speak?
Linda Reynolds, five oh seven Santa Rosa. I don't have a problem with zoning unless you leave it in the historic district. Actually, you could get more funds if it's not only a park, but in the historic district. There's There are so many funds from the Texas Historical Society, our own local historical society has a lot of money to join, so you could get more money with that designation. I don't know if we're ever going to understand the difference between historical overlay versus historical district. I think the historical district is more controlling. I think the historical overlay means you could take a piece of property, like the empty land across from the pizza place, and somebody could put a McDonald's there, a mixed use, a car dealership, whatever, because all you have to do is say, "Oh, this is a better use." And you all will say, "Yeah, we'll get more taxes if we put a car dealership there." So, we're going to pull that out of the historic district and turn it into a commercial. Again, we have yet to resolve the three point something acres that several people on this board, not everybody, but several people on this board agreed to turn into a commercial area. That has never been resolved yet, but as soon as we become an overlay, then I think you could probably take that land out and say, "Oh, we get to do the 200 feet people around there, is it okay if we turn that commercial?" And maybe they'd be happy to have a commercial. I'm not sure if the historical society would love that. I appreciate Morris Foster, who still owns land in the historic district here, to take note of what you're doing and suggest he is not for it. I appreciated the planning and zoning board voting the way they did, they were careful and thoughtful, and often I've heard people on this very board say, "Well, if the P and Z said, 'Okay, we'll do it.'" Well, if the planning and zoning says, "Don't do it," I don't understand why we're in a rush to change it. I fear, and I'm hoping I'm wrong, I fear for what we want to do with land in the historical district, once it becomes an overlay, where you can take it out of the historic district and do other things with it. We need to consider it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Second call for anyone wishing to speak.
Judy Fields, eight eighteen, Blaylock Circle, Salado. I, I don't understand why you're not listening to your planning and zoning board that you all appointed. These people have put serious time and thought into their recommendations, and you really need to listen to them, and you have good arguments back and forth, and you can compromise too. The other thing is, they said no on both of these previous ordinances. Please listen to them, they didn't just do this casually. They take time out of their busy schedules and days to read why it would be the most advantageous decision that they're going to recommend to you. The other thing is, how many on this board are members of the historical society? And if not, why not? You live in a significantly historic town in the state of Texas. We have commercial values, we have destination values, tourism, history that is ongoing, and it would be beneficial for you all to join our society too, to help us give out to the people and what's going on. We support Salado tremendously. By the way, the home tour will be back this Christmas. We've already got it going, Shirley Lay is in charge of it, it's exciting, we're going to have something a little bit different. We're drawing people into Salado to help appreciate what we've got, and the cabins that we maintain over here is where the majority of our monies and fundraisings go. So, if you're not a member of the historical society, why not? If you're that interested in the history of this precious, precious village. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
That goes for you all too.
Ms. Fields, do you think that we do not spend our busy schedule as, as much time as the P and Z? Do you think we don't spend any time on them? You're implying that to me, that we don't spend as much time as they do? That's absolute, no, that's the issue.
No, my husband served on this board for four years. I well know the time, effort, tears, and everything else studied that goes in to being a responsible.
I'm glad you understand that.
I'm sorry?
I am glad you understand that.
You, you know I well understand it, and he was very dedicated to this.
I'm not talking about your husband, you're like, "Huh," I'm talking about, I'm glad you understand it.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Why do you think we lived here?
I have no clue.
Okay. But I well understand everything, all the effort and time, anybody that serves on any of it, whether it's the Pows Board, this historical society board, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, this takes time and effort to make a success at these organizations, and I understand that.
All right. Good.
And I hope you understand that I understand that.
Thank you. Third and final call, for anyone who would like to speak.
I'm going to clarify something. Don is exactly right, it's not spot zoning. But one of the things that the, that the planner told us to avoid was, was to have a checkered board. So, I'm sorry I used that legal term, term, because it is a very legal and contentious term. This is not an example of spot zoning. My concern about the public facilities zoning district is this, is can it be applied to private property? Because if it can be applied to private property against the will of that property owner, then it could affect that property's value. If there is undeveloped land that some future board gets their eye on and says, "We want to make that a park," and that property owner is holding it for generations to someday develop it the way they want to, can the public facilities, is that only applicable to?
Publicly owned property.
Okay. That's a, that's a very key clarification, because private recreation, which was a whole different issue, can be applied to private land as well. And though that has issues, if public facility applies only to publicly owned property, then that, that's a lot different than applying it to someone who has paid for that land. Parks are usually, park properties, Salado's very unique in that up until a couple of years ago, the village of Salado owned absolutely zero park land. Every park we had was, was privately done. Pace Park.
Publicly owned and operated.
Yeah. Pace Park was private land, Serena Park was private land, now it's owned by the city itself. So, that, that carries a different connotation, I just wanted to be sure of it.
Thank you, Jim. This is the last call, for anyone wishing to speak. May the minutes reflect that it is seven minutes after eight.
Mayor, quick one clarification, I've heard a lot about this as instant money, and if it gets on that, it enhances the city's position in seeking funding, because when you go after grant funding, the funders want some assurance that that property is going to remain a public facility. And one of the ways you can give them comfort is showing that it's zoned properly, the other one is that you have a public dedication of that. So, and we'll get into public dedications at a future day, hopefully, with both of those facilities, because the beauty of public dedications is the only way publicly dedicated parkland can change, zoning or not, is if there's a public vote. So, they're not in that position yet, soon, hopefully, we'll, we'll be at a point where they're truly protected. This is the first down.
I'll entertain the motion, please.
I move we designate Serena Park as a public facility.
With a park.
With a park, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Much has been made, and seconded discussion, please.
I think it's good business to place a entity in a position to, to apply and to qualify for more funds, as opposed to more funds from the taxpayer. The possibility, the real possibility seems to me to be there. If we don't rezonate, the possibility seems to be absent. That's my primary reason for my motion.
Other discussion, please.
And I stick by my position that we're still in a rush to do this, and we could just hold off for a few months until the comprehensive plan is a little bit more solidified. Would ask the board to just put this action also on the table for the next, until that action's completed.
Other question, other discussion, please. Do I hear the call? Question?
Question?
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed likewise. Passes. Number three. Hold the public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance of the Village of Salado, Texas, changing the zoning from single-family residential SF-7 to private recreation PR for approximately 137.505 acres, located at 1010 Club Circle, more specifically known as the Mill Creek Golf Club in Salado, Bell County, Texas, and providing for the following severability, effective date, and proper notice and meaning.
Mayor, for the record, you had to read that for the audience's certification, we're not going to pull a quick one, it goes on the golf course. It is on the agenda, he has called the item on the agenda, it's a procedural issue. As you know, this particular item has been pulled, we are no longer rezoning the golf course as of action taken by this board earlier this week, so, with that said, this item is pulled from the agenda, Mayor.
Like you wished for too long ago, that you would like to read that?
The only public comment that we had that was turned in for tonight's hearing was from Mr. Ron Gravette, Post Office Box 1289, Salado, Texas, 76571. In regards to the rezoning of the golf course, he wishes to thank the Board of Alderman for their actions taken on the 5th of February regarding the rezoning of the golf course, and he says, "Thank you" with a exclamation point. So, we want to also echo that it was a pleasure working with the golf course to bring about a mutually friendly and professional resolution to this issue.
Thank you. Discussion and possible action, please. Number eight. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the 2018 Village of Salado Police Department racial profiling report.
Mayor, members of the board, you heard this particular report earlier from Acting Chief Fitz, and we recommend approval.
Questions to Don, please. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept and approve, the report is presented by Sergeant Hicks.
Is there a second? Discussion, please. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Opposed likewise. Passes. B. Discuss and consider possible action regarding a proposed concept plan and associated variance request relating to minimum lot size for approximately 54 acres, three-phase residential subdivision to be located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Royal Street and Smith Branch Road.
Mayor, as we pointed out earlier, this particular item has been pulled from the agenda at the recommendation of staff. We're going to be meeting with the property owner to go through several issues that we have concerns about, several issues that have been raised, and we hope to put this item on the agenda for consideration at your next regular meeting, this would be the 21st.
Consider it pulled. Discuss, proceed. Discuss and consider possible action regarding the selection of a perm to provide management, operation, and maintenance services for the Village of Salado wastewater system. Don?
Mike? Can we do that now? You can step out, ready to explain?
Yes, please.
Don, the company that I'm currently working with has a contract with Jacobs slash CH Two M Hill, and as such, I'm a subcontractor for that company, and I would like to recuse myself from this activity.
City Secretary, please make sure the minutes, not only, not only excuses him, but also others.
Don, you can go home.
Yeah, not, not that, the horse is a cracker, you know.
You wish.
Mayor, members of the board, we have for you tonight a, some receipt that, that kind of outlines where we've been over the last few weeks.